This meeting of guests in City Council now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the road call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
President Eccles is absent today and our meeting will be chaired by the President Pro Tem, Councilman Cannon. Councilman Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we're thankful for this opportunity. We're thankful for the life you've given us. We thankful for a new day. We ask that our decisions be pleasing in your sight. We ask that you continue to give peace in a world of confusion where events seem to whirl out of control. But chiefly as believers, we've come to submit ourselves, our motives, and our actions to you who is judge of all the earth. And we will be ever grateful and thankful to give you the praise in the name of your Son Jesus who died for us all and bore all of our sins. We ask in his name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session City Council meeting had on September the 23rd.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of September the 19th through the 25th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
So moved.
I'm sorry.
So moved.
Now clerk, will you take the vote? Sorry about that.
That's all right. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation to Mayor before you sit down?
Ms. Danielle Poole, will she come up please? How are you? Whereas let it be known that the City of Gadsden, Alabama acknowledges the prevalence of domestic violence in this city and all of its districts. Domestic violence is a crime that will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law in the City of Gadsden. The city does assist victims of domestic violence by supporting Second Chance through promoting its shelter, outreach, court advocacy, transitional housing, educational prevention programs. Second Chance is recognized for its work in providing safe shelter and supportive services for domestic violence victims fleeing abusive situations in the City of Gadsden. The City of Gadsden resolved to reduce the incidence of domestic violence by promoting awareness of the issues and of availability of the safe shelter and services provided by Second Chance. Therefore be it resolved that I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month to be observed and promoted throughout the city.
Thank you. On behalf of the staff of Second Chance and the victims of domestic violence that we serve, we thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I think she has some folks with her. If they'll just stand so we can recognize them too. I do know that they're having, one of them is having an event that's coming Saturday night.
On Saturday morning.
Saturday morning, okay. You want to, is it okay if she come over and talk about it? Is it okay?
Don't be nervous.
Good morning, everyone. On Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m., New Covenant Church will host a Domestic Violence Awareness Breakfast. The address is 303 South 11th Street. I am the former director of a battered women's shelter in Georgia. And so I've partnered with Second Chance to come together and just raise awareness of the impact of domestic violence on our community at large. And so, thank you all so much for allowing me to share that.
That's the pastor's wife over at the New Covenant. They had a conference here in town last week, week before last, I can't, week before last. Had people from all over the southeast, I think it was. Yeah, I was fortunate to be over to bring welcome to them. And again, domestic violence, as you know, is real, real close to me, having lost a great niece to domestic violence. And so I would encourage everybody to observe that. And of course, we have all this stuff in the news today about domestic violence. But if they can, be over at the New Covenant on Saturday morning at 9:00. I think it's going to be great for our community and we appreciate people like you all for the work that you do in that area.
Okay, thank you. The next one, this is time and place to advertise to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 301 Hope Street in District 1. The last known owners are the state of Alabama and Stephen E. Smith. Does anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case involving a burned house in June of this year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 430 Ewing Avenue in District 2. Barry, Lynn Alford, Harland Lee Howard, and Union Planters Bank being the last known owners. Does anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case also involves a burned structure. We started in September of last year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I know, Mr. President, we talked about it upstairs briefly. The property on Rogers Street is still tied up or in court? Okay. Yeah, that's been several years that property has been burned. And a lot of people don't understand sometimes when we have property that's burned and/or vacant property, a lot of time it's tied up in court procedures. And so they don't understand it takes time to settle all that.
Thank you. The evidence won't change.
Well, it's just.
It's a judicial situation, so the mayor promised he would get involved in that one.
Okay.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 3401 Madison Avenue in District 6. Chris Baker being the last known owners. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Actually, Mr. President, I'm asking for some additional time for this property. The property owner has completely gutted the inside. I know there are some issues on the outside. I met them on site last week and told them that I want to ask for some additional time. So I'm asking for that today. Thank you.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I know that's in your district and I think you expressed a desire to settle the 30 days, 14 days. So at this time I'd ask for a 14-day table.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 14 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 14 days.
That brings us down to new business. Do we have any today?
Yes, Mr. President, I actually have one item of new business that I'd like to ask us to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with Local Government Services LLC. Again, I'd like to ask that we consider this today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, this agreement is again with Local Government Services LLC for cable television franchise fee payment compliance service. So essentially what this is, is this is authorizing them to do an audit of our service fees to ensure that we're not overpaying or that there's no errors otherwise.
I was fortunate enough to be at a conference this past week where they had all those guys on the spot, in particular Comcast Cable too. And, you know, we will piecemeal in this and I would hope that one day we'll find the wherewithal to hire a consultant to take care of all of it. When it come down to our antennas, when it come down to our contracts with these cable providers, we've got some guy in Minnesota, I think he is, that does the negotiations for our cable service. These people are in Georgia. We've got some other folks someplace else doing something else and someplace else doing something else. So hopefully one day we'll put it all on the one consultant and let them deal with that issue.
Okay, any more discussion? No further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business? Being no further new business, that brings us down to department reports, community boards, etc. Kay Moore, First Friday, if she wants to speak about?
Thank you, council members. I am Kay Moore, Director for Downtown Gadsden. And yes, it is First Friday. Thanks to all who helped me fill in last month when I was not here to take the ball and run with. Y'all did a good job because I watched, so thank you very much. You know, October is always our tractor month. The Alice Chalmers tractor people, they'll have their big event the next weekend at Nakalula Falls. So we bring the tractors in to First Friday and put them up in the 600 block and we get a lot of people, especially a lot of kids, that really do like that particular thing. So we will be changing to our winter hours this month because it's starting to get dark early. It gets dark about 6:30. So from 5:00 to 8:00, we'll back our hours up from 6:00 to 9:00 to 5:00 to 8:00. We'll still have the same great shopping and food and entertainment that we have. And just people are always asking, when does First Friday stop? Well, we go all the way through December. We take off in January and February. So First Friday will be all the way through December. We'll try to do a salute to our veterans again in November this year and then also to, we have our North Pole Stroll where we stroll down and like the Christmas tree in December. But it's again going to be 5:00 to 8:00 and just a lot of good things. If the weather will cooperate, you know, right now it's not looking good, but like I told somebody this morning, only God knows if it's going to rain or not. If it's a light rain, we go on. If it's a severe weather, when we talk to EMA, we will, you know, we'll take the appropriate action because we never want to put anyone into any kind of harms way. So that's First Friday. I do have another little quick thing that y'all probably don't know about because it seems to be a very well-kept secret. Saturday, we're having a big tailgate party on Broad Street between 5th and 6th Streets. Buffalo Rock and WIAT TV came to us and said, we want to do a tailgate party. We want to have the Alabama Ole Miss game on the Jumbotron. So they're bringing up a giant TV and they're going to have all kinds of yard games in that block. That block will be closed between 5th and 6th Streets from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. probably. We hope to get it open a little bit earlier, but it's going to be closed all day as they set up all these games and things and that Jumbotron TV. So all you Alabama fans need to come out there. We're going to have, all of our restaurants will be open in that block. And in addition, there'll be Jim and Nick's. They're bringing their big kitchen trailer in in front of the Cultural Arts Center. So we'll have that. We'll have yard games, photo booths, face painting, a video game truck for the kids. So this is a very family-friendly event. There'll be seating for the football game. It's going to be just like a big, like I say, a big tailgate party. So this was their idea. This is at their cost and so we appreciate that. And we're just excited about that. So it's going to be a lot of fun. So Friday night, First Friday, Saturday, the tailgate party. So any questions, go to downtowngadsden.com or call me or Mary at the office at (256) 547-8696. Yes, Mayor?
Someone had asked me could Auburn people come today?
Auburn people can come as long as they holler for Alabama over Ole Miss. That's my only thing. I mean, yeah, we welcome all people, but they don't need to be ugly. This is going to be a fun thing, so.
I think that Auburn help will be welcome because they're going to need all the help they can get.
Yeah, exactly.
You said there would be seating.
Yes, sir.
Not necessarily to bring a lawn chair?
Well, I mean, they've told us they're going to bring chairs for seating out there. So, I mean, if you're comfortable in your own lawn chair, feel free. But they're going to bring seating and everything is what they tell us. This is, you know, I don't know if y'all know this about me, but I like to be in charge. And I'm, I'm really not in charge of this event. I am so grateful that they've chosen to come here, but I'm kind of trying to grasp information as they go. But, yeah, I think it is going to be a fun time. But yes, there are chairs drawn out on my little map, Councilman Stewart. So hopefully there will be plenty of seating there.
One other question for Mayor Curly. Did y'all know she likes to be in charge?
Well, and that's, I'm sorry, you know, just some things happen and that's, you know, sometimes you have to give up control and it's harder to do. But thank y'all, really, anybody has any questions, call our office or check on the website. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay.
Mr. President, I would also like to make an announcement, just a reminder to our citizens who are residents of District 5, that we will be completing our absentee voting process this week for the upcoming runoff election. The last day that I can receive an application will be this Thursday, October the 7th.
Thank you. That brings us down to remarks by the Mayor and Council. I'm going to give my little remark right here. It says, due to the City Council runoff election in District 5 on October the 7th, next week's council meeting will be held on Wednesday, October the 8th. The work session will begin at 10:00 a.m. and the council meeting will follow at 11:00 a.m. Okay, that, Councilman Reed, would you like to go first today?
Yeah, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Buster and Curly. I made my first and last appearance at the hot dog yesterday and I enjoyed it thoroughly until Billy and I went back. And what'd they do, Billy?
Ran out of hot dog buns.
I tell you what, it's a sad day when you walk up and they'll still hand you an old weenie and say, go.
That's right. Just spread some mustard on it and eat it.
And I couldn't hold the mustard because they were hot and it kept running off the end. I said, yeah, I'm through with that. But when are y'all going to start back, Buster? I know that was the last one. Okay. Don't get that in. Okay. Very good. Okay.
Councilman Stewart?
Just would like to remind everybody, there is an election next Tuesday, a very important one. So I encourage everybody in District 5, please come out and vote. Let's get a good turnout. That's all I have.
Councilman Avery?
Yeah, we talked about First Friday. Of course, there's First Saturday coming up too on Tuscaloosa Avenue. They'll have a lot of fun and games out on Saturday. Kay, I think you're going to be okay weather-wise. I talked with James Phan this morning and he's going to cut the rain off about noon. So supposedly the weather's supposed to be nice Friday evening. Oh, first, oh, it starts at 1:00, I'm sorry, gee. From 1:00 to 5:00, I think those are the hours. But supposedly the weather's supposed to be clearing up on, I had to check the football weather, so I gave them a call. And so, but anyway, if you can't come out Saturday too on Tuscaloosa Avenue for First Saturday, we would appreciate it. Like I said, I was fortunate enough to be at a conference last week and there were a number of issues that came up. And of course, the technology and the cable situation is a hot issue right now because of all the mergers and everything that are going on. And we really need to get a handle on that before it gets out of hand as far as contracts with upcoming cable companies. And they're trying their best to get everything in place before all these mergers are okayed or certified. And I think cities and governmental agencies are going to come up on the short end when these companies start bargaining with us. And that's why it's good to have an expert or someone in the cable industry. I think most of the council members have heard Steve Roberts, who have been to this city to put together presentation. Well, Maxine Waters was asking all of these great questions to the panelists that was there. And then when she said, thanks to Mr. Steve Roberts for some of those questions, I thought, you know, here's the Congress lady going to the guy who came to us to talk to us about what we should be doing and the things that are happening down on the road. So I would encourage this council, since I'm going off, to probably give Mr. Roberts another call. This guy is well-respected around the country, particularly when you have the Congress people going to him, getting information or getting questions that needs to be asked to these cable companies. Most of you may or may not know, Steve is a former City Council member in St. Louis. He's an attorney and been a business individual, business person for a long time, owned several major hotels and cable companies and stuff. So he's well-versed. But anyway, I'll just get off my soapbox. Those are the type of people we need to incorporate, bring to our city so we can get some expertise in areas that we don't have here to do ourselves. That's all.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to piggyback, I think you've heard Councilman Avery speak to this issue a number of times. There's some validity to what he's presenting. We do need some professional guidance so that we can get the most value out of our agreements with our cable partners and with our telecommunications partners. So, you know, that's something that we'll definitely have to look into. Just a couple of quick things. Unfortunately, there's some that may be happy about this. I think Mr. Eccles, he's not here to hear it, but he'll hear it later. Did get some feedback from the legal department relative to my pledge to move forward with a one-sign ordinance, for one political sign ordinance. And I've been advised that there's very little legal standing that would support such an ordinance. And I'm not happy about that. But so for now, I will back off of that, but I'll revisit it at some point in the hopes that there'll be some changes in that. So I'm still turned off by all of the political signage during the election year, regardless as to how I may have benefited from my own signage. I am still turned off by all of that because I think it creates a lot of clutter and it's a mess. It really is. And it's an imposition. Again, I've only been an elected official for one term, that's four years. I've been a voter since I was 18 years old. And I have been turned off by those signs for about that long. They're very tacky.
Check on two signs, that's opposed to one. Is that what happened? Mr. Attorney, did they not just vote down the one sign? Or what did the court say?
It's an infringement on political speech. And there have been decisions where, like, for example, where cities have limited the timeframe in which signs could be up, political signs, that's been struck.
Oh, okay.
Location.
Location. One thing that has held solid though is the city's right to not have political signs put on city property. But every time a city around the country has tried to restrict political signs such as we wanted to do, the courts have ultimately struck at that.
My friends in the advertising industry were well-set to pay me well if I was able to get this passed. But again, I think that was just some good debate. I'm not happy about it, but I understand it, so we'll move on. The only other things I have are the, on Friday, October 3rd, at Gadsden State Community College, there will be a National Manufacturing Day. I want to encourage all high school seniors and anybody else that's available. I think Principal Keith Blackwell is going to be allowing the high school seniors time off. He's going to be excusing them that day to attend this event at Gadsden State. A good friend of mine, a gentleman by the name of Scott Haywood from Honda Manufacturing of Alabama, is actually going to be there presenting. He'll actually be the first presenter. And he's going to talk to the young people about the career opportunities that exist within manufacturing. Alabama's still one of those states where we, our economy depends heavily on manufacturing. So it's important that our young people, you know, kind of like farming. You may not necessarily want to have to do it, but it's got to be done. And if you know it or not, there's a decent living that can be made in both farming and manufacturing. So it's important again that our young people go out and learn more about manufacturing and how it contributes to our economy and what all goes into it. It's not always you actually having to be the person on an assembly line, but somebody has to design the layouts. Somebody has to support them from a human element standpoint. Somebody has to develop the processes. Now there's a big total quality management system or there are international quality standards that have to be maintained. So there's a lot that goes into it that our young people really need to learn about. And it all piggybacks on our career tech program because many of the skills that are needed in those manufacturing settings are taught and are learned in our career tech program. So again, I want to encourage people to go out, the starting time for that I think is 8:30. So it's Friday, 8:30 a.m., Gadsden State Community College. And the last thing I wanted to do is mention a young man by the name of Cannon Thompson, who currently is living in my district, but he attends John Jones Elementary. I want to thank the Chief and Officer Henderson for supporting me today. We presented this young man with a patch, honorary badge sticker, and an honorary certificate. While we were campaigning, while I was out campaigning, and I didn't want to politicize it, but while we were out campaigning, this young man drove up to us in his little golf cart that was made up like a police car. And, you know, and I asked, who wants to be a police car here? And he said, well, I do. And so I promised him then that I would send over some friends of mine who were police officers that could help him, you know, help him understand what it would mean. And what was very encouraging is that his motive was pure. He didn't say, Mr. Williams, I want to carry a gun or I want to carry a badge. He said, I want to be a police officer so I can help people. That's when you want to get them because he was pure in his motive. He really wanted to be an officer so he could help people. And so we went over there and I wouldn't trade anything for the look on that young man's face when we handed him that badge in front of all his classmates this morning. I wouldn't trade anything for that. So again, I do want to recognize him and thank his parents for allowing us to do that. And, you know, and I will say this, I was very deliberate about not making this a political thing because I could have very easily pulled this off before the election and garnered two or three additional votes. But that wasn't important to me. What was important is to make sure that all the focus got put on this young man, and I think we accomplished that today. So again, thank you, Chief, for your support there. That's it.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Councilman Johnny Cannon. Thank you, Councilman Williams. You know, it's refreshing to hear from here, an invitation to our young kids, you know, to go out to an event that's going to perhaps affect their lives or could have a positive effect on their lives, a very positive effect from now on when we talk about career tech, when we talk about going out to the colleges, you know, and learning how you when we talk about going out to the colleges, you know, and learning how you can get ahead in this world. It's an invitation to the kids. It's not an invitation to some other events. So thank you for those, for that invitation. I'm sure that the kids and the parents out there will abide by that and attend as they seem to be interested in that type of career. And I trust that this city, the council and mayor, will continue to get those persons in every avenue that we're exploring that have the expertise in those fields to give you the right directions and to give you advice as to what is good and what is best for this city. We trust that you will continue to do that. There are people all, there are people in Gadsden, there are people all over the state of Alabama, all over southeast, that are experts in their fields, and they know what they're doing. They have the expertise. So I just ask us to give those people the opportunity to give us their knowledge, let us take advantage of their vast knowledge in giving us advice on directions in which we should go when it comes to contracts with different organizations. I think we'll be better off if we leave it up to the experts to tell us how, or to advise us, I should say, not tell us, but to advise us on which is the right direction, regardless who or where that person may be. I've been, yesterday, we had the last, that was the last Jazz at the Water, Jazz at the Water Wall, Buster's Jazz, you know, Curly's, Curly's, Curly Dogs. Yesterday was the last day, and I was really pleased, we've been pleased. I know Kay Moore and DGI and Buster and Curly have been very pleased with the turnout that we've had, that you've had there at the Water Wall. I was a little discouraged in the fact that we didn't, you know, we didn't have as many council persons to attend those events during the summer that should have been. But I encourage you to, Buster's given us the startup date next year. I encourage council to go out there and enjoy the waterfall, you know. I think it'll be from 11:30 to 1:30 again when they start it up again. And Kay Moore, don't want me to say this, but we encouraging an expansion for the Water Wall. So the next thing you know, we'll have to block. We'll have to block off part of Broad Street because the event would have grown so tremendously. So we're looking forward to the Water Wall being again next year. Litchfield Middle School, don't you all forget Litchfield Middle? I will continue to give that a shot in the arm every time I get a chance. Litchfield Middle School needs your support. Get out there and support Litchfield Middle School. The Boys and Girls Club need your support. Support the Boys and Girls Club in East Gadsden. They really need your support. They're growing, they're growing. They're having growing pains now, which is a real good thing to have in an organization where you're servicing your boys and girls in the community. So support them, and we'll look forward to continuing the relationship that we have with the Boys and Girls Club in East Gadsden. Thursday at 5:30. Litchfield PTO, Thursday at 5:30. I encourage everybody to come out and join that PTO. Join it. The dues are $5, Curly? Only $3? We need to raise that. But anyway, $3, $3 for dues, and we encourage you to join. Thank you.
Any more business for anybody at the table? There's no further new business. Ask for adjournment, please. We're adjourned.